We're calling to order the study session for May 6, 2013. Do you have anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, if you don't, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there changes to the agenda tonight by council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item one, which is the Animal Welfare Control Commission Joint Meeting. I think before we start, how about if we just go around and everybody introduce themselves? We'll start with Rhonda, and we'll go around with... Go for it.
Rhonda Champion.
Oh, go ahead. Please press the button right below the mic there. Make sure the little light's on, leave it on, and pull it towards you, so we can get your name, everything on the record.
Barbara Hans.
Barbara Hans.
Larry Schultz.
Joyce J.
George Pond.
Turner Arkenbier.
Bud Starker.
Ginny Petty.
Joe Demat.
Mike Stites.
Kathy Dodge.
Kristy Davis.
Davis Reinhardt.
Joelle Hedin.
Jim Lorenz.
Mary.
Dan Brennan.
Thank you. So I guess this is... This meeting's a merit jury to me. So I guess this meeting has been requested for quite a while, and we wanted to get the Animal Control Commission together with staff and the city council to come up with some different discussions. I hope we can keep the discussion polite and lively and friendly, maybe come up with some win-win solutions. So what I wanted to do tonight is, there's a memo in the packet from me. I met with three members of the Animal Control Commission. They gave me some feedback of what they felt was an issue, and then... So I wanted to do tonight maybe is they could say a few words tonight, and then staff could say a few words about the board, and then we'll have council discussion and questions. So how about if we move first with the Animal Control Commission? You can give a report. Rhonda, are you the chair?
No.
Do you want to be the chair today?
No. I want to make sure that everybody on the commission has their say. I'm not... I'm just one.
And we'll go around, but you want to start it off that side.
Okay. So we're here to request a clarification of our duties and perhaps validate the actual existence of our animal commission. We would also like to expand our duties to become more proactive and educational. We have a standing in the codes of Wheat Ridge, but we're not really being included in the operations that allow us to effectively and responsibly fulfill our duties. I think you have a copy of some of our duties, and I typed this out very, very quickly, so it's not real, real complete. But number two is reviewing complaints made concerning administration and effects of the city ordinances relating to animals, and making recommendations to city council, the mayor, city manager, or the police chief on appropriate action to be taken. Number three is maintain a liaison with the county health officer and reporting all matters that may endanger the public health to such county health officer. We have no idea who that county health officer is. Number four is approving or denying all new kennel licenses applicants after a public hearing, which is discretionary. In the past two commissions, members... In the past, two commissioned members and one ACO officer went to inspect. I think the part of that was more eyes. Currently, we are given a form which is blank indicating no infractions and asked to approve. It's difficult to feel comfortable approving on the basis of this form, and I'll send around some copies. There are several types of kennels which are not differentiated when we're asked to approve, such as boarding, daycare facilities, breeding kennels. When asking to visit one of the sites previous... Just recently, we received a memo saying, "Please be reminded that visits from the Animal Welfare Commission members to facilities applying for kennel licenses are not considered as official city inspections for the purposes of granting kennel licenses being applied for," which seems in direct conflict for what we've been asked to do in part of our duties. Number five is approving or denying kennel licenses renewals after a public hearing. That is discretionary, we understand. Approving or denying requests for exceptions against owning, and I'm not sure... Again, I was in a hurry. I don't know if that's more than a maximum number of dogs. Investigating citizen complaints regarding large animals, developing a written procedure on how the complaint is to be investigated. We hear things from the community, and when we ask about incidents, it appears that we're on a need-to-know-only basis. One example of that was the horse hit on 38th Street. When we ask about it, it was indicated that there were many problems at that location in the past, but we were not aware of that. If we had been aware of it, many of the commission members would have been proactive and tried to do something about it before it got to that point where an animal was hit and killed. We're asked to establish kennel fees, which is fairly straightforward and easy. We're asked to have hearings on recommendations to the chief on variance applications to keep more than the maximum number of animals. One recently, we recommended, but the chief denied, and it seemed that he did not have the ability to approve it even before we were asked to have a hearing on it. Number 10, we're asked to review and make recommendations on rules and regulations formed by the chief regarding kennel standards. We have no information on that. And it goes on, but I didn't have enough time to continue. I want to emphasize that I talked with, in many of these kennel license approvals, there is a number at the top, the PACFA.
Rhonda, would you mind explaining this to council again, such that they can run it around with what this is and what you're concerned about?
This is the form that we are given in order to approve a kennel license. There is no information on here other than that there were no infractions, and it's signed by an animal control officer. There's no notes in terms of what the animal enclosure standards were, what it looked like, sanitation, what the place looked like, food and water. Where was it located? There's just nothing here that makes me comfortable in responsibly approving a license.
Was anybody at the inspection from the Animal Control Commission?
No. No. I spoke with... This PACFA organization is a state organization, and we have four PACFA representatives, four in the whole state, and they're in charge of inspecting kennels and many other things, pet stores, many, many things. There's four of them. Now, here in Wheat Ridge, I understand we have forty, thirty-five, forty kennels alone. Eight... That was not the information that we received at one of the meetings. But anyway, they're really overwhelmed, and recently we lost our representative for this district. So we no longer have a backup here until they reappoint someone. And when I talked with the Fort Collins or the North person who is representing that PACFA, she said, "Boy, you know, if you guys ran on the kennel license, that would be great. The more eyes, the better." There's just not enough people doing it. They're just spread too thin. So that is my part of the comments.
Did anybody else from the Animal Control Commission want to make any comments? That I'll move, go around, we'll have city staff make some comments, too, then we'll open it up for questions and comments. Anybody from Animal Control wanted to make any comments? Kathy or Erna?
A few things before I came. Wanted to be prepared. I want to start by commending Mary and the animal control officer team because I really think they're working diligently to educate the community on wildlife issues, setting up vaccination and licensure clinics, and IDing, spaying, neutering low-cost options and locations. Now, that's all a part of the code. I haven't understood, and maybe this is a good reason for us to be here, what the whole regulatory piece is, because I think that was turned over to the chief and to the animal control officers. I, for one, don't see our role. We're not educated in terms of regulatory process, so I don't see our role as that. Now, if we want to go out and visit facilities, then I think that's another issue. And I don't think anybody would have any problem with us doing that. I think that knowing Mary and her team, I think they would be open to that. I, on the other hand, see that she needs some help. And I think that we have... That the Animal Commission needs to take on some educational projects, that we need to become more proactive, that we want to offer a safe community for our dogs and cats. Primarily, I'm going to talk about dogs because I think that's where some of the issues really lie. To begin with, I think we have a dreadful rate of licensure in Wheat Ridge. Seventy-nine percent of the dogs in Wheat Ridge are not licensed. Am I correct? So in my discussion with people, and we have a pet sitting business, my partner and I, in Wheat Ridge, so we have the opportunity to talk to a lot of people. And I don't think a lot of people are just openly disobeying the law. Some of them, surely. They don't understand why they need to license their dogs. Something else that... And I'm not going to get into the reasons we do, because I think you all know those. But the other thing that's probably the biggest concern to me, again, as a pet sitter and a dog owner, is the leash law. And whenever your dog is off the property, she is required to be on a leash, correct?
Yes.
Now, we have a couple of problems with that in that I have a neighbor right across the street who has a dog that he thinks it's okay for the dog to be in the front yard. When somebody's walking down the street with their dog on a leash, this dog runs after these dogs and, in some instances, plays with them, in other instances, attacks them. There's a little boy who's two years old that's involved in all of this. He plays with the dogs as they come up and down the street. So I see that as a danger kind of zone that I think we need to be attentive to. And I think the other thing that comes into play is aggressive dogs, because you never know when a dog is going to get excited and get aggressive and how the people are going to respond. So I'm looking at what kinds of educational forums can we put on, whether it's us as the commission, or some trainers in the communities, or some other educators in the community, who would like to identify helps for us? Like, what do you do when an aggressive dog comes up and attacks your dog when you're walking him? How do you keep it from going to a biting situation? And the last thing you want to do, at least not me, is get in the middle of a dog fight, because you're bound to lose. And I think we had that experience recently, didn't we, Mary? With a Dane. Yeah. So these are just a few of my concerns, and I think that we just need to make sure that issues like this don't get out of hand. I think we can be proactive and do some things in advance, and that's what I see our role to be. I want to make one real quick observation, is I noticed that when the economy went south, we didn't get pizza anymore in our meetings, our animal commission meetings. And that's okay. I understand that.
Joey, what's wrong, Joey?
But the thing that I have been wondering... The thing that I've been wondering is, is do we really have a role? And if we do, what is it? And I would like very much, as an animal commission member, to work with council or anyone else to identify how we can be better stewards for our animals and the community.
So Rhonda, are you basically saying you'd like to see the Animal Control Commission do some more of this outreach to dog owners and pet owners about the laws and the leashes and everything?
And I think recently you had an article in the Neighborhood Gazette where you spoke to neighbors' fears of making a complaint. Well, I think that is double true when it involves an animal. So perhaps we can have some discussions about that in an open forum, because I think that really scares people.
Right. Any other Animal Control Commission members want to say a few words before we turn it over to... I'll ask Mary and the chief to say a few words. Okay. Thanks. And then we'll... Chief and Mary or Jim, did you want to address any comments? Then we'll open up the council questions and discussion in kind of an open forum.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, we had hoped was going to be here so he could talk a little bit about the advisory...
Hey.
Presto. You're the man.
Mr. Bolton's here.
So Jerry, are you comfortable in jumping in and talking about the ordinance? Or you want me to go first, and then you can jump in?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Why don't I go first, since I've heard the concerns that are expressed and talk about those? When I became the chief eight years ago, I've since had three supervisors in my animal control unit, community services unit. And one of the things that occurred when I first got here, there were two issues really that came up. First was, could the commissioners go out on kennel license inspections? And would I approve more than the limit allowed for the number of dogs and cats? So I reached out to city attorney's office, being a new chief, and said, you know, "What do I have the authority to do here?" And essentially, the bottom line of that was, you know, the Animal Welfare Commission is an advisory commission. And as described in terms of the duties, those are accurate. We have a responsibility to make them aware of animal issues in the city, which we do at our bi-monthly meetings. There have been a couple of cases in the last year, one involving the horse on West 38th Avenue that was hit and killed, and another one involving elderly woman with rabbits that was a neglect and cruelty case. We actually had another one with a senior who had over seventy cats that she had in her house. We'd gotten a call from an HVAC contractor who had been called there to fix her furnace and couldn't get into the house because the stench was so overpowering. So we have strived in those cases not to do an immediate notification, because I don't believe that that's what the code calls for. I do believe the code calls for us to update commission and to try to find reasonable solutions to the problems that our community services officers face as it pertains to animal control kinds of calls. And I think for the most part, we've strived to do that, and we have. The other issues that... Or the other responsibilities and roles of the Animal Welfare Commission are, I think, pretty well laid out in regards to approving exotic animal permits. Some of council will recall back in 2006, we sought the opportunity to revise that ordinance to bring it in line with surrounding communities, in part because we only had one person ever put in for a permit to have an exotic animal, and that's still the case today. We just don't get them, and despite our efforts to make people aware of that, they just don't do it. So we've got one permit for an exotic animal that exists today, and, you know, we'd certainly listened to, you know, recommendations from commissioners in regards to how we could do a better job in terms of getting people to put in for permits. I think my staff strives very, very hard to engage this commission, and I think you've heard some pieces touched on. I think from an education perspective, we've really strived to get the Animal Welfare Commission engaged. We got them engaged in the dog park issue with their city parks and recreation department in an effort to get them engaged with coyote management plan that we'll be talking about later. We met with them to seek their input in regards to that. There is one conflict that generally comes about when we have issues involving animals, and it's really the difference between concerned citizens who are animal lovers, who want to try to find a way, another way to deal with animal control issues other than some of the best business practices that most municipalities in the state use today. And those business practices are structured around issues of life safety, life health, kinds of issues. So if there's a situation where an animal is in a neglectful situation, we don't call the commission on that, because we have the responsibility from an enforcement and a life safety and health perspective to deal with that situation. We certainly make them aware of it. One thing that we've made them aware of recently is, because of the large number of seniors that we have in our community today, we need to try to find a mechanism and a way to help seniors when they can no longer care for their pets. And we've asked for their input and their direction in regards to that, which I think is their role as a commission. which I think is their role as a commission to provide that. There is nothing in currently that I interpret in section 256 or in talking to our city attorney that allows commissioners to be, I'll use the term operational, to actually go out and do the kinds of things that our community service officers do. And I think that from a policy perspective, that's a pretty sound policy to have. You know, when you look at a typical community service officer today, there's a person that's been through, when they're hired, sixteen weeks of training. And that training covers a wide variety of topics. It covers the law, both the state law and municipal law, department policies, safety training. You know, believe it or not, sometimes when they go out to handle calls, they encounter people that just aren't pleasant and happy to see us and aren't necessarily compliant when we try to deal with those. And I'm hesitant to put a commissioner in a situation where, without any knowledge at all, we may put them in a situation where they may not be able to adequately handle, you know, a situation. There's also the issue of vicarious liability, both from a training and a supervision, you know, perspective. Besides the sixteen weeks of training that a new CSO goes through, they have over forty hours of training on a variety of different topics throughout the course of the year that we try to provide to them and all of our officers. You know, they're mandated by the state or mandated by the requirements of the position that they have. So there's a lot that's involved in being a community service officer. And as a chief, and I certainly understand, because I hear sometimes from people who call that are upset, from a chief's perspective, we handle somewhere between thirty to thirty-five thousand calls for services, police department, a year. And of those total calls for service, last year, we had over seventeen hundred animal control calls for service. Of those thirty-plus thousand calls for service, we only got complaints from seventy-four people last year, which is less than point zero zero two percent of the total number of calls for service that we handle. However, we did receive almost two hundred commendations from citizens, you know, including our community service officers in regards to how they did their job. So I understand that sometimes when we go out and have to take some sort of enforcement action, whether that's providing somebody a warning, whether that's issuing a citation, whether that's having to seize an animal because there's a life, health, safety issue there, that that's going to upset people. And we really strive to, you know, to educate people and to talk to people about what their responsibilities are if they're going to be, you know, pet owners. So, you know, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but I think that that in general sort of lays out. Oh, there is one other thing I wanted to touch on. When we bring a commissioner on, and we've done this with our current commission, when I realized as a new chief here that we had a, an issue even back, you know, eight, seven, eight years ago in terms of the commission knowing what their responsibilities were, we put a book together for every one of our commissioners that details, you know, section 256, which talks about their rules and responsibilities, and details chapter four in regards to what they need to do. And we also, you know, strive to make them understand. Here just recently we brought the city attorney in to talk to them about section 256 of the code, to give them an overview of what the code says their, you know, responsibilities are. As a police chief, I really truly believe that there is a place for the Animal Welfare Commission. And that place is, as one of the commissioners touched on, is in the areas of prevention, it's in the areas of education, it's in the areas of outreach to community members as it pertains to animal control issues. I don't have any issues with bringing kennel license applications and descriptions of kennel licenses to the commission to seek their recommendation or approval. I think council is aware there's a conflict in our code in regards to whether they recommend or approve as it pertains to a statement that was made in regards to a recent case as it pertains to the number of dogs a person had. There again is a conflict in the code. Chapter four says that I can grant exceptions, but chapter twenty-six in our zoning regulations clearly states that, you know, what the limit and what the cap is in regards to animals or dogs or cats. And it was the recommendation of the city attorney, quite frankly, to play that process through as it was outlined in the code until we could make clarification. To not just tell somebody, no, you can't do this, but to go ahead and allow them to seek a special use permit, to grab them, to grant them a temporary permit until such time as they could sell their house and move to another jurisdiction. The only and last thing I would add is, my staff has spent and invested a tremendous amount of time in trying to find out who else out there has an animal welfare commission? And how do they use that commission and how's that commission used? We were only able to find two other organizations, governmental organizations, that have anything that might even be closely linked to an animal welfare commission. And that's the state of Colorado has a wildlife commission that helps, you know, communities in the state when they have a community that is having an issue with a wild animal, and La Plata County. Where we've not been able locally by doing research through list, email servers, the internet or phone calls to local jurisdictions to find anybody that has anything closely related to an animal welfare commission today. So I'll end that and turn it over to the city attorney to touch on the code.
Well, I appreciate you allowing me to arrive late. I apologize for being late. The good thing is that Chief did a great job covering the waterfront here, but I do want to emphasize a couple of things. Chief mentioned the code and I know that it's been brought, I know Carmen Buret in my office met with the commission and has brought to your attention, kind of highlighted some code inconsistencies that at a minimum do need to be cleared up. As has been mentioned, we've got one section on kennel licensing requiring the commission to conduct hearings on license applications. Another section says those hearings are discretionary. A major due process problem if I'm a kennel license applicant and you don't give me a hearing, you know. You sort of, it needs to be either that there's a hearing or there isn't. We've got a section authorizing the commission, pardon me, the commission to be the final decision on kennel license applications and another one authorizes the police chief. So there's that, a kind of obvious thing to fix. The appeal process of commission decisions to the city council, there's one code section that authorizes that and there's another section authorizing the police chief to make licensing decisions and no appeal process when the chief is doing that. Again, due process problem, kind of depending upon who I ended up in front of as a kennel license applicant. And I don't like that decision. Either I get an appeal to the city council or I don't. And, you know, those things don't match up. Those are all things that I think need to be fixed in the code. But more sort of broadly, the, I do want to emphasize the, I think, the point the chief made from my perspective representing all of the boards and commissions of the city. Boards and commissions in the city are, in their topic areas, policy-making boards and they make certain decisions on licenses, but they are not enforcement boards in the sense of going out and inspecting and taking on the role that a police officer would take on. The best analogy I can think of, for example, that I think be familiar to all of you is the liquor authority here at the city. Years ago, when I was first hired as city attorney, the city council was the liquor authority and after a license application hearing went to eleven o'clock at night, the city council realized that it was probably a really good idea to create a liquor authority and give them that task of cross-examining witnesses on a liquor matter. We have a liquor authority, of course, that reviews license applications, conducts hearings, says yes or no, and also conducts suspension and revocation hearings when a complaint is brought to it. But the other whole half of what the liquor enforcement of the city is involved in is the police department going to bars, checking behind the bar to see, okay, do they have the right caps, et cetera, on the liquor bottles? How are they stored? What's the inventory process for liquor? And as you can imagine, there's a very detailed set of rules that bar owners have to comply with. Not least of which, of course, are all the disturbance, over-service, service deminers, all those kinds of things. You have police officers go and write those tickets up. Those tickets come to the liquor authority, but the liquor authority members are not the ones going out to the bars to, at least not for inspection purpose. You know, they're not on the, what I'll call the operational side. And in a serious mode, I should tell you that there's a reason for that, in my opinion. The employees of the city that are operational are trained for that. They're paid for that and the city accepts the liability if they mess up, which they do occasionally. All, you know, we've got a lot of employees and there are things that happen and that results in, you know, claims against the city. We've got insurance, but of course, you don't want to make, like anyone else, as many claims on your insurance as you can. You want to keep that to a minimum. I'm not suggesting that authority members, you know, aren't, or commission members aren't equally interested in limiting liability to the city. What I am suggesting is that the people that we put out on an operational level, whether it be a snowplow driver, a recreation center employee, or an animal control officer, these people have training to do what they're doing and are, therefore, our liability as a city is considerably less because of that. And that's, in my opinion, one of the reasons why you have a pretty major divide between policy and operational. Having said that, I do think beyond just the kind of inconsistency issues with the code that I mentioned, especially around kennel licensing, it would certainly be well to clarify the policy role of the Animal Welfare and Control Commission. I know the police department would appreciate that. I think the commission probably would, having some clear lines of responsibility, which no matter kind of how you view this, my take from just looking at over the years is the lack of those clear lines has been as much of a frustration as which side of the line would you rather be on? And you've heard my opinion and recommendation on where the line should get drawn, but I think that even having one is something that would be of benefit to everyone. I think that's something everyone probably could agree is a good thing.
Mr. Dahl, you may have missed this, but one of the commissioners asked about an educational outreach from the commission to the community. Is there any reason why they can't do that in the code?
No, not at all.
Flyers knocking on doors, giving people licensing information about their dogs?
Sure, to the extent.
They're not enforcing.
You're not enforcing, to the extent you're not there to say, okay, I'm checking on how many dogs, I'm checking on the condition of the animals. I have some concern, I suppose, with, I would be inclined to keep that outreach to, you know, a more of a formal meeting setting here at the town, at the municipal building, manlings, other materials that go out. While you could have a commission member knocking on a person's door, I think that that kind of individual action has its own exposure and it tends to represent the operational side of what we're trying to accomplish. And a policymaking body really can only act as a body. Even the city council, you know, with the greatest of respect to them, the city council members here, every now and again I have to remind the council members that, you know, they don't act individually to create policy for this city. No city council member sitting here can do that. They can only do that as a group, meeting in a public meeting with a majority vote or a tie vote and the mayor votes to break that tie. And that line is important to draw. And so for that reason, I think I'd say that outreach is perfectly fine. I think it fits in rather well with the policy role for the commission, but I would do it as a group.
So let's open it up to council and board questions or comments to each other. Kristi, did you have anything to say or comments or?
Going to order though, I just have a question. We're going to, so we're going around on a dialogue. Are we going to have council discussion then afterward and you'll let us know when that is?
Well, we can, I thought we were going to all talk together as a group.
Okay.
There wasn't going to be any.
Action.
Well, you could direct staff to do something. So we'll just go around the room. Kristi, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, dividing the policy versus some of the regulatory and the enforcement type of it. But I guess my question is, is I think it's fortunate that we have a commission that wants to actively participate and we're very fortunate to be in that situation. So as a council member and a citizen, because I do have two dogs, I met Laura once, she saved my tail. And, and, you know, I do think it's important if we have additional help to our group, that we provide that. And I don't know if that means, I certainly don't, would not expect any of the commission to go out and enforce anything on their own. But is it possible that there's a list of, hey, we're looking at kennels, we're looking at these three kennels today for licensing. If anyone would like to ride along, you can join us on the ride along. And, you know, maybe set up some criteria, you know, that maybe, hey, we want you there. You know, not literally as a silent partner, but just as an extra set of eyes to help us. We don't want you coming in going, excuse me ma'am, when was that water last refreshed? Or, you know, those types of things. But if we could still have there be some type of collaboration because it sounds as if we have a group that wants to do those types of things. And I guess there's been times when I still need to do it that I've, you know, Mary and I have talked that I'd like to spend a day with her just driving, seeing what all they do. And how would that be different than our commission doing similar things? So a couple of different things. Is there a way we could set up some collaboration that perhaps if there's applications up for renewal or new, that they can volunteer to go along just as kind of a buddy system? Because I would agree that this application doesn't tell me much except for the name of the kennel, you know, with all these things checked and notes around it. So that, and then if there's a way that, you know, with the liability, if they're going along, not necessarily enforcing, but, you know, being a part of a day or something, is that possible?
Well, the chief might want to speak to this and I realize it's your dialogue and I'll butt out in a sec. But the one concern I guess I would have with a ride along to a specific location, I'll give you just a, I think, probably a fact pattern that would happen. You get a licensee or a licensee's spouse that is not happy about the ticket they got a month ago and is, decides to behave in a threatening manner toward the officer because they're not pleased. The officer's there on a, just for the reason you described. And it's got, the officer's bringing a commission member along as described and the officer has to all of a sudden switch from sort of kennel licensing mode to police officer dealing with an angry citizen mode. But at the same time, you've got, you're the officer now. You've got someone that's not trained in police work that's right there with you that all of a sudden you've got to protect in addition to doing your job. Now, this is me kind of imagining what a concern might be for the police department in that context. Now, we do have ride along programs in general, but, you know, we have specific liability waivers for those and it's not a kind of designated ride along program. That would be the concern that I think I would express, you know. Some visits might be perfectly fine and you don't know that until the door opens. And then it's too late.
Chief, do you want to address that question?
Well, I'll pick up from where Mr. Dahl left off. I certainly agree with, you know, with that. I mean, safety is an issue and a concern. I think what's important for folks to understand is when we assign, when a CSO is assigned the responsibility to go out and do one of these, you know, we set a general timeframe, but we're not always there. Sometimes a call comes up. I mean, it's, we're not just driving around looking for things to do. We have a variety of different tasks and responsibilities that CSOs have and certainly, safety issues take the priority there in regards to what they do. They're a very, very busy unit. The other issue that we've had, that had happened before was when the department used to allow commissioners to go, there was an occasion where an inappropriate comment was made by a commissioner to one of the kennel licensed people. I don't think that any of our current commissioners would probably put us in that situation, but I think one of the operational issues for council to consider is is we're representing, you know, the city of Wheat Ridge with an enforcement capacity and the commissioners are representatives, appointed representatives of the city from the aspect of approving those things. And if you have a situation where, you know, there's a complaint filed, somebody gets upset, you know, how do we deal with that? Because commissioners don't work. you know, how, how do we deal with that? Because commissioners don't work for, for me. You know, I, I report to that commission to, to sort of deal with that. We do have, you know, rules about, about ride alongs as well as, as Jerry has touched on. And, and one of our rules is, on, on a lot of calls, we have our ride along stay in the car. We don't even take them into, into a house on certain kinds of things. So I would be personally reluctant for all of the reasons expressed to, to allow commissioners to, to do this. And I wanted to touch just on one other thing, so council really understands it based on a statement that Kristi made. We do try to engage this commission as it pertains to education activities in, in the city. Over the course of the past year, we have tried to engage the commission in a pet fair that would, would allow people the opportunity to come to one location to see a variety of different kinds of animals and, and talk about animal safety and raising, raising animals and those kinds of things. What, what we've had a tough time doing is engaging the commission in terms of doing some of the work that's involved in that. So, you know, staff can't devote all of, all of their time to, to trying to get things together. This has to be, and, and I want to have a, a positive collaborative relationship with our animal welfare commission. You know, it's important, it's critical to, to our success if we're going to have that. But, but it's, it's important for council to understand that we do engage this group with, with prevention and, and education related ideas, and we do ask them what they want to do. I mean, we, we actively seek that out. I've been in meetings where that, that's been asked. And I know that, that Mary has done that, Vicky Wiegel did that, and, and Raleigh Enskeep all did that as CSO supervisors with this group. So I want that to be, to be clear to council in regards to how we're trying to, to collaborate and work with, with this group. Thank you.
Tracy, or Kristi, any more questions?
Yeah, just one more question. So I know earlier there was a question that came up that it was the chair and, and, you know, so is one of our commission members the chair of, of the commission? So, so I know Jerry had said, so are you the chair? And it was kind of like a, uh. You know, so I think, you know, that's, you know, a question I have is, is the chair and vice chair or just the chair, one of the commission members?
Yes, Bob Hans is, is currently the chair, but he sent me a letter today saying that he wanted to resign that position for health reasons, and I believe Erna is the vice chair. So when we have our next meeting, we will have to, to go through the process of, of electing a chair and a vice chair.
They run the meetings?
They run the meeting with, with the assistance of staff. Yes.
Ron, do you have any comments?
I do feel like they run the meeting. I feel rushed. I feel like they're, have someplace else to go. I frankly feel discounted and patronized. In terms of engaging us in like the pet fair, yes, we were asked about the pet fair, but we were not actively asked, what would you do? And it was your decision, Mary, to cancel that. It wasn't anything to do with us. So to say that we were not interested is disingenuous at best. Maybe that was misinformation that was given, but we definitely were interested in helping.
George, do you have some questions? Comments? Okay. Okay. Anybody else from council or Mr. Demont?
I, Mr. Champion was talking about four state inspectors for a certain group. I didn't, I don't know the name, what that stands for, but... Okay. So has the state sort of laid this responsibility down to local municipalities over the years that, you know, sort of they're, are they just sort of like passing this along to the local control as a local control issue, or is it just something that's sort of just kind of, the ball just sort of stopped rolling on?
You mean the kennel inspections?
Well, inspe, yeah, inspections like she was talking about, is it sort of...
The PACFA licensing?
Going away, or is it just, are they putting it more responsibility onto locals?
Actually, they do inspect, and then we follow up with our own inspection because it's in our code. And in speaking to, I work with many agencies that work with PACFA. They don't even have a form for inspection, and they're actually putting one together right now with a new list of the criteria to pass these kennel, to get your license. They don't pass anything along to us. We can actually partner with them if we have an issue with a kennel. And we have called them several times on cases where we needed their help. So they, they really don't push anything along to us.
So municipalities where there is no, well, there's very few, so if, you know, if there was no animal welfare commission, where would that responsibility lie? Strictly on a community services or, or code enforcement or whatever it's called in that city? Is that where that responsibility would go to?
Yes, it would.
To, to work with the state?
Yeah, uniformly, that's the, I mean, the majority rule, or probably the ninety plus percent rule out there is cities and towns have animal control officers if they're large enough to have, you know, big enough to devote. Some of them have animal control units, you know. Uh, smaller communities, it's animal control was a, one of the jobs of the, the police department. Occasionally, it's moved to another department, but it's a staff. It's a, you know, a, a form of law enforcement, local government law enforcement.
So there's as many variations of, of that relationship between the state and the local governments as there is with, you know, in some, the community services or code enforcement is not part of the police department and animal control, and sometimes is done by the counties and not the city. So it's, I mean, it's hard to follow. There really is no procedure to it.
Well, they have their procedure, but we also do, we follow our code. And for, like Jefferson County, they work closely with PACFA on, with their regulations. We all do. All, all of the state agencies, you know, they're, they're to support us. So we, we refer to them and they, you know, if we, if they know about a violation in our city, they will refer it back to us.
Has that procedure changed much in the last eight, ten years?
I, I worked with, in animal control for sixteen years. No.
No?
It's, they're very dependable, just as we are when we're referring back and forth, so.
And I just had one more. Kathy had mentioned the dog licensing. And you said a lot of people don't know why we do actually license. I'm, I'd be one of those people. I couldn't tell you why we license our dogs. Do you, I mean, if someone were to ask you that question, how would you respond to that?
Well, there are really... I have four things. It reduces the number of unwanted dogs as it encourages spay and neuter. Its licensing will ensure that dogs have rabies shots, which, you know, is about the health of the community. It enables the ACOs the, to track dangerous and aggressive dogs. And it allows dogs who may get out from their fence or whatever to be returned home. Miss anything? The shelter, probably the funding of the shelter. Mr. Stites, do you want to talk about that or staff?
Because I think Larry might have been on council at the time, but a few years ago we did, we worked with Jefferson County, I think it was Arvada, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge and Westminster, because at the time Denver was banning pit bulls in Denver. And we saw them where they were going to start heading out to the suburbs. But we did not want to ban breed specific dogs, because in most cases it was not the dog's fault, it was the owner's fault or whatever. So we went with the licensee program. One, it gave us a database on who might have what dogs or whatever, and then that a way you could track them or whatever. Now, the problem that we've had, if you say that seventy-nine percent of the dogs in Wheat Ridge are not licensed, I understand that, because we have never had good cooperations with the veterinarians around. Never. Now, I take my dogs in, I have two dogs, and I take them in every year for their shots or whatever. And every third year, I don't know, they, that's all changed too for their rabies and stuff. I have never been asked to license my dog. So we have never, ever gotten the commitment or the help through the veterinarians. And that's one thing that needs to change, because, you know, seventy-nine percent, we need to do that, especially since more and more people are, are getting dogs, which is fantastic. Cats, you know, whatever. Now, back in the sixties, when the city first became a city, you gotta think back, we had a ton of horses, cows, pigs, I mean, everything. We had everything. So yes, the animal commission was formed and it helped on a lot of that. I think over time, of course, we've lost that. You know, a lot of the farms have gone by the wayside in particular things. I see a need for the animal control commission, but maybe they need to shift towards the education side. Now, everything's coming full circle in Wheat Ridge because you have, now gardening is back in again. So hopefully people could, you know, now you got chickens coming back in again. I think that the animal controller, the animal commission might, might need to change your name. I don't know. But maybe they do need to shift now to the modern side of the deal and go education. They could be there for people that want chickens or that want, you know, whatever, and they could, you know, certainly help there. But I do see a need, and I see over time liabilities have changed, laws have changed, in particular things like that. Fine example of that, without taking too much time, was years ago they used to issue council and the mayor and everybody badges, police badges. So one of the very first mayors, and they would give them radios and everything else, and one of the first mayors went on a disturbance call. So he goes up to the front door, knocks on the front door, and right off the bat, there was a guy standing there with a shotgun because he was into it with his wife. Well, I can guarantee you it was the last time that mayor made a call like that. But that's how things have changed. You know, things change. But I do see, and I see a need for the, the commission. Like I said, maybe they need to change your name. I don't know. But I, I see an education piece here that the commission could really, really help the city in doing with licensing with chickens, frogs, you know, everything else. Because I see a need and I see it coming full circle back. So I would like to see the commission stay.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. So I'd kind of like to talk, touch on what Mike said about not having that veterinary support. I mean, I guess my question is, is part of reading through this is it says that we need to have two licensed veterinarians to maintain, that maintain practices within the city, but need not be residents of the city in order to provide professional or technical advice to the commission. Are any of our commission members practicing veterinarians? And to me, that screams, if you want to get people more active in supporting a licensing program, you probably should have them on board. It doesn't say they have to live in the city. They don't. They just have to practice in the city. If we got a couple of those on board, I think that, that would help with the education piece, because it gives you an avenue to have education out there through the actual veterinarians. I, I guess I'd, I mean, in no other commission that I know of, if you were, like the building advisory code, you had to have X amount of experience. If we didn't have it, then you can't meet. I mean, it, to me, it's like if you put in something in here that says you have to do this, we really should be making more of an effort to get those veterinarians on board.
Mr. Bird, chief, or take him out?
The commission, when I was brought on board as the chief, did, did have one vet, Dr. Bill Trevs, who left us about four years ago, I believe. We have tried to outreach to, as, as CSOs, to the different vets that, that we have that operate in the city. We just, we just don't get a whole lot of traction when we, when we do that. There doesn't seem to be an interest. I am committed to, to, to continuing to try to get a veterinarian on there, because I think that that's, it's good to have that type of expertise and that type of training on, on this commission, both for my staff and I think for the commission as well.
Anybody else have any questions from the commission or, oh, will we come back to, Ms. Jay?
I do want to express appreciation to the commission members. When we have volunteers in the city that are willing to give their time, we do want to embrace that. What I'm hearing the most from them is they feel disregarded and their, their value is not, is not heard. And when I, when I read this form, I'm thinking that to be useful, they need more information, just like we provide the planning commission. And the planning commission doesn't have the final say, but we give them the kind of information that they need to make their decisions, which apparently is around licensing new, any new kennels. Is, is that the limit to decisions or?
I frankly am still confused. One place says we are supposed to recommend the approval, and, but we don't have any place in it. We don't have any place in the process. And if we can't go and physically visit someplace and we're asked to approve that, I, I, I personally am not comfortable with that. I feel a responsibility.
I, I think as the planning commission has, they may or may not actually go to the places that they need to look at. But I think if you've got more information, if photographs are needed, or if this form needs to be more filled out, so that you're at least respected as, as valid citizens trying to do a job. That might feel more comfortable and, and might act as a backup to your decisions for the, and if someone has to make a final, which has, I think we need to clear that up.
We do.
Which we can do, so that there is an opportunity for you to work together. Of course, the education piece is great, and perhaps some direction in that. You, you should really be present at various functions that we have, because I can see the value of that.
Well, do you see any issue with them having educational fairs and training or educational outreach on, as a commission, like they were talking about earlier, having town meetings or neighborhood meetings on animal control issues? Educational issues?
I, I don't see any problem with it. What I see is the attendance would be lacking. People rarely come out for things of that type. It's hard enough to get them to meetings where, that we have. But I think as a part of meetings, they should be automatically invited and work up some literature. And if we need to help them, or if somebody within the city needs to help them, be it dog licensing, and the points were valid, very valid, that Kathy made, as to why that, and then you'd be more valuable to the city.
Jenny, do you have any comments?
Pet fair, it was Mary's idea, but several of us decided that it was just too much work right away, you know, to have it very soon.
Okay. Erna, any comments? So we had Mr. Pond or Kristi? Go ahead, George. I, I don't want to...
I want to try to be responsive to a number of the things that were in our packet as well as some of the things I've heard. At, at least the things that I'm hearing that I think are, are common, common ground are, you know, that everyone sees that a clarification of duties as expressed in the code is, is probably reasonable, a reasonable thing to do. And probably would help, help, help both sides move forward in a, in a, in a, also in a clear way in terms of duty. I heard the request and I see it in the packet for expansions of duties. I don't agree with that and I don't, and I certainly don't, wouldn't go as far to say that those should be expressed in the code. There's been a discussion tonight about education and I, I totally, I think that's great. And I think educational outreach or doing something as a commission to activate the community and, and outreach would be, would be great. And that would be up to the commission to, to mobilize behind that idea and to, and to do that. I would not agree with, with specifically trying to write that, that type of thing into the code. I think that would be cumbersome and not really necessary. I think it's, I think it's, it's a reasonable thing to do for education. There's been some back and forth about the idea of, of expanded, expanded duties in, as it relates to exercising the approvals of, of kennel. I like the example of the Liquor Authority and I like Joyce's recent example of the Planning Commission even better, because that's my point of reference. And, and as I read this, it's a hearing, you know, the, the duty at least, depending on how, how I read it today, but maybe how it gets redrafted or whatever, is to conduct a public hearing. And that's, you know, I mean, at least in the planning world, that's somewhat of a quasi judicial matter where you're actually receiving information and you're, and you're coming to that in a place to, 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 to cast judgment, not, and I think it would be, for instance, not right for, for, you know, a, a couple of, of commission members to have evaluated a place at some level and a couple of others not to have. And, and you know, all of a sudden you've got people who are not prepared to sit in judgment as a group, when that was brought up earlier, to sit in judgment as a group in a, in a unified way. I certainly, I'm not going to argue that whether or not the information presented is enough information in order to make ju- I certainly, I'm not gonna argue that, um, whether or not, um, the information presented is enough information in order to make judgment. I think it, you know, I mean, again, I think the planning commission is a great example where the staff is putting together a presentation that has enough information, technical information, professional information, um, that with the applicant's testimony and other, and other, uh, cross-examination is enough to make a, a judgment. And that's, I think, what a public hearing is, if it, if it gets too, you know, too fragmented, it's no longer a fair public hearing. The way we have described public hearings, that's not fair, that's not right, we should not do that. And, and I, I absolutely, um, adamant about that, at least in my opinion. You know, I, I think clearly, you know, there can be a dialogue as to what is the amount of, what's the right amount of information in order to sit, sit in judgment. I think that's a reasonable conversation, I think that's a reasonable conversation to bring up in the commission and talk about and to figure out. And I'm sure that staff would be, um, absolutely willing to have that conversation, I'm sorry to speak for you, but I, I mean, I think that's a reasonable conversation to have. You know, and again, I, as a planning commission member, you, you got all your information, and some people may have driven by someplace to get an eye on it, but that's about it. You know, it wasn't like you were conducting interviews, uh, with applicants or doing something that puts you in, you know, as one of eight, puts you in a different position to make judgment than, than the other people, and, and I think that's, you know, something that I, that, um, that we really need to consider. You know, again, I mean, like a ride-along program or something like that, maybe as an official ride-along program and, and as a good faith and, and, and relationship-building exercise, fine. But if it, if it's intended or even construed to be anything more than that, I, I, I don't think that, I don't think that that would be, would be a prudent thing. So, in general, uh, you know, there, there's not a lot that I, that I, um, you know, on the requests on this memo, there's not, there, there's, you know, I think clarification of the code, I think, is absolutely a reasonable thing to do and, and, um, and to, and to clean that up, and I'm not hearing that a dissolution of the, of the commission is wanted by either side. And some of the other council members have, have said that tonight, and, uh, and I, I would agree with that, I'm not advocating that the commission should be, should be dissolved. I just think the code should be cleaned, cleaned up, and the clarification of those duties, as you requested at the beginning of the meeting, is something that, um, can move forward.
So before we move on to some kind of decisions, does anybody else have any comments or questions, Ms. Davis?
So I just wanna follow up a little bit on some questions I have, and then kind of, uh, overall summary, similar to Georgia's. I mean, I do agree that, uh, the clarification of, of duties is necessary. Mary, I have a quick question for you. So you and I worked on, or you worked on it and called me nicely enough with updates on a situation with, um, a neighbor in District Two. And I know you put a lot of legwork in trying to call to get, you know, people to help elderly with traps and, you know, to, to find resources for folks and that kind of thing. Now, is that a role that the commission could play to help you, help you on a day-to-day basis? I might not be going to the person saying, you need, you know, to get your son to help you, but going to the senior resource center, and you know, is that a role that these folks could help you on so that you can be more productive in more of an officer duties?
Well, I will tell you that Joelle Haddon does help us with trapping feral cats. But I, I will also tell you that when you are dealing with senior citizens, it's very difficult to work with them because they don't want your help. And so it's a very delicate balance, and, and they get very mad, and, you know, they wanna be able to be on their own. So having, you know, the authority to step in and even just write a warning, it will get us somewhat into the door. I don't feel comfortable having a civilian person doing that.
No, I don't mean that, but let's say, for instance, the situation we're talking about. I know you probably did a lot of desk work trying to find some entities, the senior resource center, the, you know, Jefferson County Wildcat Society, whatever they may be called, to try and get resources to this gal. So would you be able to call Rhonda and say, Rhonda, got this case, I mean, you don't even have to be specific. I got this case, uh, cat's running rampant, she needs him out of her yard, but she's too old, can you help me do some legwork calling these facilities to see if they have any programs that I could recommend to her, rather than you doing that legwork?
Actually, yes, Joelle Haddon did a lot of legwork for us.
Okay. So, so those are things that are available. So, I guess, um, just in summary, and this is just my viewpoint, but what is that movie where someone says, I think we have a failure to communicate? And, and...
Full hand Luke.
Is that it? Yeah, okay, there, thanks.
Hand of full hand Luke here.
But, but I think that's, I think that both parties, you know, want the support and, and, you know, both parties wanna help and do the right thing, and both parties would appreciate the help and support. And, and I'm just wondering, as we are, um, clarifying duties, if there's a way that we could make requests and, you know, think outside of the box of, of ways we can do it, one similar to, you know, okay, yes, you're not gonna deal with the public on a face-to-face basic, basis, but here's a case, could you help me for some resources? And that we, you know, I almost, I don't wanna say a mediator, but I almost am to the point where, that there needs to be somebody that's kind of neutral, that kind of, you know, what are your requests, yes, no, legally we can do those things, yes, no, what are your requests? Like, for instance, I'm even thinking the application, okay, so if someone can't go on site, is there a way that we have the applicant submit photos? And then the officer could verify, yes, this is actually what we saw, or, you know how sometimes you go on orbits and the hotel looks beautiful? And when you go there, you're like, eh, didn't know it was next to a, you know, oil facility. So, I, I'm just wondering if there's ways, that there's a couple of things that we could satisfy the commission, um, with some maybe different processes? And I know the officers are probably saying, Christie, don't you dare make me take photos. But perhaps the applicant could take the photos and you could verify, verify that, yes, indeed, this is what the facility looks like. But I'm just thinking that there's ways that we might be able to collaborate a little better and both sides feel like it's a win.
Chief?
Just, just to address that, uh, at, at one of our recent meetings, and I wasn't there, this, the issue of the kennel license application was brought to our attention. And what my staff has told me is, is we said we would work with, with the commission in terms of, of that application. What other information they wanted, uh, that was brought to my attention, and I said, well, let's, let's work and try to address that. We can certainly, as pertains to kennel licenses, I mean, if, if, if the commission wants to see photographs, if they're interested in more information on the application, I mean, we can balance, you know, our, our, our needs and our time to, to try to, to address that. But we need to know, and, 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 and I'm not sure, I don't know if, uh, you, you, you mentioned the failure to communicate. Uh, I think there has been a failure to communicate at, at times, and, and maybe that's, that's partly on staff, and maybe that's partly on, on the commissioners in terms of, of what they thought their roles and responsibilities were. Just so council knows, I mean, we have tried over the last few months, uh, actually the last few years, to provide them with a resource book so that they, they had a book that described their duties and roles and responsibilities. We've, we've tried to, to assist them, and, and maybe from their viewpoint, I guess, maybe it, it was an assistance to try to structure meetings so, so that there, there was an agenda, because previous meetings didn't, didn't really have an agenda. Uh, we've tried to, uh, you know, hold meetings to Robert's Rules of Order. So, you know, when we're, when we're doing public hearings and doing meetings, we're, we're meeting the, uh, you know, those, those liability kinds of issues or those process issues is probably better, is a better word to use in regards to that. So it, it, it is a different feel than, than previous meetings, which were just, just kind of open. But there, there is an opportunity for, for new business and for ideas to, to be presented. And, and, and I, I don't feel as a chief that, that we're in there saying no to, to everything that they ask. There, there are occasions when, when they ask to do inspections and those kinds of things where we try, you know, I think, to, to explain where we're at with that. So, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're open to, you know, to, to different ideas as, as, as it pertains to the framework of that. And, and I think Mary's given some excellent examples tonight of, of some of the work that some of the commissioners have, have done to assist us. You know, we had a, a call back in, in late November, December, over at one of our local hotel establishments on a horse trailer that had, uh, like eight or nine horses in it that had been left there for days. And, and we tried to, you know, so, you know, they hadn't been out, they hadn't been fed, and, and those are the kinds of cases. I don't know that, that, that the community or, 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 you know, council members or, you know, know about, but in, in those, I mean, we do try to, to outreach to the commission and try to find, cuz it's not easy to find places, you know, for somebody to take, you know, eight, nine, 10 horses. I mean, we do, we do strive to do those kinds of things, so.
And, and I don't, I don't think at any point anyone has said that, but I think what might be a, a good opportunity is to understand, you know, the, the needs of, of both parties from the, um, commission side and from the enforcement side, and, and just see, you know, what are ways that we can do this a little differently and, and meet each other's needs. I, so, so I just think that it would be nice to just have a, almost, again, you have to, it sounds like clarification of the duties, and, and I think, you know, each other can make requests of each other and talk about like the application. But, but it almost sounds like we need a process that would facilitate that in a kind of neutral, let's start from here. Let's, you know, what works, what doesn't work, we can't do that, okay, then let's do this, and, and I just, I just think that would be a good place to move forward.
Erna? Go ahead, use the mic, just, there you go.
Sorry. I just wanna clarify something, we have always had an agenda. I've been in the commission for over ten years, my husband was in the commission before I was, and there's always been an agenda that we had to follow. When you guys gave us this, we felt that you were trying to control the whole thing, and it's supposed to be about the citizens. You know, about a group of people that just get together and talk about issues about animals in the city. I felt like, I felt like I had to just follow that and that was it, that's, you know, conversation was, among us was out of the question. And also I wanna say about the inspections that we used to go to, it was always, we didn't act like officers by any means. We were just citizens there asking questions, you know, we helped out. A lot of times on questions that we asked that the officer didn't think about asking, but we never took a role of being a law enforcement.
Well, I don't think anybody's accusing them, I just think we, everybody wants to, you know, learn from the past but not live in it and move forward. I think that's what we're trying to get tonight, and, and then George, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I actually wanted to say that Tracy's comment about the vet requirement in the, in the commission, I think, is a really important comment, and I was trying to kind of sort that out as we were talking. It's clearly not the staff's responsibilities to populate our commissions, it's ours. And, and so Mike Stites is gonna contact all the ones in Division, in District Three. And, um... But I, I will, uh, I, I will absolutely, uh, step up and say, you know, I'll take responsibility for that, certainly in our neck of the woods, and, um, seeing, seeing and hearing that there's a deficiency of that representation in this commi, in this commission. It's not staff's responsibility to go knock, beat the bushes to fill our commissions, that's ours, so I, I mean, so I'll, I'll make some phone calls myself. Maybe Mike will help me, I don't really know, but...
So I just wanted to help everybody keep moving forward here, if we're done. So what I'm hearing tonight, if council wants to maybe move forward some of these ideas, does anybody on council have a problem with, uh, the city attorney and the police department having a code cleanup and also working with the commission on a policy clarification as soon as possible? Cleaning up our code so that there's not discrepancies in that code, and also moving forward with a, a policy change or cleanup between the board and the, and the staff? Does anybody have a problem with those two types of issues moving forward?
I would recommend that we have a facilitator or a mediator there, just, just, just to make sure that it's comfortable. That's my personal opinion, Davis looks like he has something to say, but I, I don't think we're communicating what now, and I just think that might help. I mean, what's it gonna be, an hour, hour and a half?
Well, let's, let's do this, we, does anybody have a problem with the code cleanup and the policy cleanup first?
Well, you have to make some decisions around the code cleanup too.
Well, staff has some recommendations that they, they can bring forth to council.
And, and commission should be a part of those recommendations.
And that's what I'm recommending, is that, the, the, what I'm suggesting here is if council has a problem with the code cleanup and the policy cleanup, be a discussion between staff and the board, and those bring, those changes be brought forward for council approval. And then, then they, then they added caveat was, we need a facilitator, I don't know if that's true or not, but, so...
It's my opinion.
Right. So Davis, do you wanna make a comment on that?
No.
So does anybody on, on the council or the... Does anybody on the council have a problem with the animal control commission and the city staff working on a code cleanup and a policy cleanup that we, we brought back to council for approval as soon as possible? Okay. Then, does anybody on the council have a problem with the educational outreach programs that the animal control commission would start working on new and improved or different outreach programs for licensure and dog, you know, it'd be, whether it's town meetings, neighborhood meetings, have some kind of a program in place, whether it's flyers or educational progress, that would be moved forward as council, the problem with staff working with the animal control commission on that? Okay, and then the last thing would be was, um, on the kennel applications, if you could, maybe have more, more backup information on those applications, like planning commission does, where they have photos or they have more information that, so the staff or the animal control commission isn't working blind, as blind, so... Now, the last question was, do we want a facilitator, that's a question for council to, could you have to pay for one? Comments?
I mean, isn't it clear tonight, I mean...
I think it's going pretty well, I mean, so... I mean, does anybody think this meeting has been negative or...
I don't think it's negative, but I think it, I, I think a facilitator re, um, the role of the facilitator is to allow each party to voice their thoughts and, um, make sure people are heard, and if other people are hearing different things, to under, ask for clarification and that type of thing. I will be happy to use some of my funds to do so.
Okay, Mr. St, Mr. Starker had a question or comment?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things to say. Number one, I think we have, um, I would like to thank the members of the commission, because I think we have a group of involved citizens who are helping to make Wheat Ridge a better place to live. I think they have a role in our community. I think that role is sort of an advisory, advisory role to be able to search the marketplace and search, uh, communities and develop the best practices that, that, uh, may be employed in our community. To be an adjunct to the CSO officers in terms of helping develop, uh, recommendations to the city council on animal control, uh, measures and, uh, and how, and, and how the CSO might go about doing their work. I think the public outreach component, it could be very, very viable and very good. I think they could, uh, uh, you know, develop, um, develop kennel licensing, um, data that, or, or licensing background information that would be helpful to make a good decision on, on, on if, if an applicant for a kennel, um, having completed the application really demonstrates that they're, they're a credible, uh, you know, business and operation in our community. I, I agree that, uh, I think one of the first things to do is to go through our code and make sure we get rid of the, the conflicts about the roles and responsibilities about where the commission sits, uh, vis a vis the approval or recommendation process. I think we've had a pretty good discussion here, I probably at this point would, would, uh, augur against a mediator. I think, uh, if, if, um, we sent the commission and the, and the police, um, uh, CSO officers or whoever on the city side of the operational component were to sit down and say, how can we work this thing out? And if they came back and said, we, you know, we just weren't able to talk together and we get, we got nowhere, then I think maybe then we, then we need to look for a mediator. But I, I think we've had, uh, had enough forthright discussion to be able to make that happen, so...
Just mediation and facilitation are two different things. So I just wanna make sure, I'm not recommending mediation, I'm recommending a facilitator.
Okay.
And, and I, if I use the wrong word, I'm sorry, I, I meant to use whatever word you had used.
Okay, Mr. Reinhardt?
I guess, I, I'm gonna be, I'm playing Mr. Stites, and I think that, you know, if, if we've got, first of all, I agree with Christie that we, to, to give this some hope... we've got, first of all, I agree with Christie that we, to give this some hope of moving forward effectively without some mediation, it...
Facilitation.
Facilitation, thank you. So if that's facilitation, I think it doesn't feel to me likely to succeed. And if it, to a certain extent, I believe that if it's come to that, then, you know, I'm personally reviving whether we're even on the right track with the need for this commission at all, which I think makes me lonely at the moment, but I would support Christie if we're going to try and put some value into it. By the way, the education component, I think is brilliant, I think all the rules about cleaning it up certainly may make it viable, and with facilitation, I would hope that we would be able to put this back together, but it's truly going to require the undertones that are at this meeting to be evaporated and people really wanting to take a new start, because I think it's, I have some serious doubts whether we're getting value out of this exercise. So I support Christie, if we're going to give this thing a go, let's put the facilitator out there to try and get the communication lines open again, because they're clearly broken down.
Mr. Jamar?
You know, I think we really have this group that is in a unique situation, because as we said, there's only one county that has an animal welfare commission, and we're sort of a, you know, I don't know if we're conquering uncharted territory or if we're just carrying on where so many people have given up, and, you know, it's good to see that everybody, I see the frustration, but it's good to see that everyone has a common goal. I mean, the frustration with the dog licensing, I think, carries over around the whole room. Everybody is frustrated, maybe they're frustrated for different reasons, but I think the thing is we need to get to the core of where the frustration's coming from. You know, I think if you, you know, when I hear from people, why do I license, why do I have to pay 12 bucks or 14 bucks just so the county can build a new facility? That's what I hear about, why do I have to license my dog? Well, I know that's not true, that's not the reason why, but, you know, if there were a yearly fair, licensing and education fair where, you know, where it was, you know, half off to license your dog, or you get a, you know, your doggy gets a little special badge or something, you know, I mean, something fun that we, that we could do just to bring everybody together on the same weekend, and you would bring the council, and a lot of the different commissions would come, I mean, it's just another educational piece, especially for, you know, for me and for everybody in the city who doesn't understand, why do we license our dogs, you know? Sometimes we just do it, you know, just to get it done, but maybe we don't really understand. And, you know, we could help with your frustration, we could pass along the reason why, you know, and then when I see a dog, I could say, hey, did you license him? Because the city has this fair every year or something like that. So, I mean, I think that, you know, we all share your frustration, and we're all, you know, everybody's in it to help animals and help the unique situation that we have in Wheat Ridge, where we do have a commission and we do have the community services team, and we're all working for the same goal, but we need to just sort of get on the same track. So, I mean, anything we can do with a facilitator, see how I thought about the word, right?
That was good.
You know, as a, just a, you know, if anything, just to bring everybody back together. I mean, I do see the, I see the benefit of that, but I agree with the cleaning up the code and getting everybody, everybody's feedback and everything, and I appreciate everybody being here, so, and I've heard frustrations from other people, too, you know, and it's not from just citizens around, I mean, just people calling. It is a big thing that, maybe it's just our district or something, but I get calls every month, once a month, about something about animals, it's just sort of a, it's a different, you know, we have a different kind of, we have a bunch of different animals, different kinds of things around here that maybe some cities don't have, so it's good to have you. Thanks.
Mr. Stites?
I've got a request for the commission to study for me, because every year I get the call, Mike the Beaver's back, and Lee the Goldchuck there, and the poor guy does have a lot of damage down to his trees. Well, the state can't help, Jackson County can't help, so would somebody please on the commission study up on how to get rid of Beavers? Thank you.
So, you know, to address Christie's comments, I thought that tonight was a good way for everybody to clear the air and vent and vet out what they had concerns, and everybody had a chance to say what they had to say. Christie, do you believe that, would you be willing to let them meet once, with the staff and themselves to meet, and if they just can't come to any kind of agreement or moving forward, then they bring in a facilitator and after one meeting? Because I get the impression there's willingness by the animal control commission and staff to sit down and hammer this out as, you know, nine adults or 10 adults, rather than trying to bring in somebody to walk them through it.
I don't get that same impression.
Well, I don't know, so...
I mean, I don't get a hostile impression, but I'd still like to make a consensus that they move forward with the same things that we listed and have a facilitator be...
Yeah, we've already got that down, but that's, we're on the facilitator part right now. Mr. Chief?
One of the, before we had this meeting called, when I met with my staff in regards to, you know, some of the frustrations that they had, and some of the frustrations, quite frankly, that they heard from commissioners, one of the alternatives, one of my suggestions was, was to look at a facilitator, to bring somebody in, to clear the air, you know, because there's a lot of history, you know, with some of the commission members. So what I'd like to try to do, if council's okay with this, is we reconvene as a commission that we all sit down and talk about, you know, starting off anew, and if it seems like we've still got, you know, issues, you know, that people still are carrying grudges in their backpack, whether that's my staff or commissioners, then we'll look at bringing a facilitator, because I'd already started to explore that before this meeting was called.
I'd like to throw that question to the commission, what they're comfortable with.
Generally speaking, animal...
I mean, again, I don't want to put them on the spot, but I do sense a little bit of, you know, that it might be a safer environment with a third party. So just saw some of this...
All right, so I'll tell you what, let me facilitate, wait, wait, let me facilitate the meeting here, and we'll go around and we'll ask, on the animal control commission, how many of you would be interested in a facilitator? We'll start with Rhonda.
I definitely would, I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, Ms. Hand? Can you, mics, bring your mic over, there you go.
No, I don't think we need one.
Bob?
No.
Um, ain't Erna?
I, well, I'm half and half. I think we can talk it out, but we have to be open on both sides.
Right. Jenny?
I'm for the first go around without one, and if we can't get along, then, yeah.
Okay. Kathy?
No, I don't think so.
Joel? Kay?
Mary?
Yes.
I think Mary has done a wonderful job keeping us well informed of what has happened. This meeting, I thought, was going to be, to predict the code changed so that at least it would be all consistent. That's frustrated us an awful lot, because we look at one side and it says, do this, and the other side says, do that, and we don't know what we're doing, and I, we also did not know, are we worth keeping within the city of Wheat Ridge? Those were the two big things that were concerning us, as I understand it, for this meeting.
Right. Direction tonight was to clean up the code and work with you and work with staff to get this back on track. So Christie, do you want to make your consensus for the facilitator, or what do you want to do?
Well, I think you just went around and changed it, so...
No, you can, so make a consensus.
Well, if it's not, you know...
You asked the animal control, you wanted to know what they thought, so they gave you the information now.
Well, I think the important thing to remember that this isn't about people, it's about process, and I still feel, seeing these types of situations, that facilitators do help with process to make sure that the people are left out of it, and, you know, I still would make the consensus for the facilitator, just as I did the beginning.
And through your public outreach? You said you'd help pick...
If, but if the council agrees, then, I mean, it could be council or, either way, I mean, you questioned the funds, but if it's funds that we can find available within the city, fine, if not, we'd use my public outreach.
Okay, so on council, Ms. Jay?
One of the things that could be valuable is the facilitator might help in deciding whether it's worth keeping the commission or not, help everybody kind of come to that, I see some heads going yes, kind of spreading through that and saying, you know, if we come to this conclusion, will that help us make that decision? Because there sounds like there's some doubts there.
There was a consensus by Ms. Davis to move forward with a facilitator, how many are in favor of that? One, two, three, four, five? Okay. Mr. Chief?
Yes.
Oh, you're, okay, all right. So that's going to, we're going to have a facilitator for the first meeting?
Well, I would like to try, if it's all right with commissioners, and I got the sense from listening to them, that we would try a first meeting, see if we can work through what some of the issues are, and if we can't, we'll bring a facilitator in. Is that agreeable? I think so? Okay.
With all due respect, I don't think council agreed with that. I'm under the impression that council just said we believed it would be better for you to move forward with a facilitator.
If that's your direction, Davis, then, I mean, that's fine. I had heard from the commissioner something different, but I think we all agree that bringing a facilitator, and if it's needed, we'll do that, so if that's what you want, that's what we'll do.
The consensus was to bring in a facilitator, and...
Can we change it? Or let me come in and say if needed.
Oh, now, come on, guys, we gotta...
We'll go ahead and do it.
It's Christie's consensus.
Yeah, Christie made a consensus to bring it forward.
From this first step on.
All right, so we'll start again. The consensus was to bring a facilitator in for meeting number one, and council has to approve that. How many are in favor of bringing the facilitator in for meeting number one with the animal control commission staff? How many are in favor of that? One, two, three, four, five? Okay, so the first meeting. Okay.
We all agree with that. So I'll bring four. What do you have?
Okay. Well, do you need something to bring forward if council members are willing to use their public outreach?
That's fine, we don't have to do that.
Okay. So I guess Ms. Jay agreed, did you say you'd help?
Nope.
Okay, so we got two council members who are willing to pay for it through their public outreach, okay? And Mr. Reinhardt, so you have three sources of funds. Okay, good.
Your next meeting is two, because I will personally buy you pizza.
That's out of the Davis Fund. That's, no, that's the Davis Fund, the Davis Fund will buy you pizza. All right, well, thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate your feedback and input.
Yes, I really appreciate being able to be heard, thank you, for all of us.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess so you can run to the restroom. Started again, so we got, get going?
Okay. And by the way, I want to, I do want to talk to you, do you see the email on Teller Street Traffic?
We're going to go ahead and get started.
I want to, I want to talk to you, I want to bring, maybe I'll just do it by email to everybody. I want, I want to just get a staff report on traffic calming alternatives for our streets, it just keeps coming up. And so I'm going to be pitching, if you want to have a post-bond... We have the narrow, and I think we should do that more often, that works good, I think, compared to the others, but the piece at Teller...
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started, so please take a seat.
Thirty-second to twenty-six is a free one. I walked it for a while, yeah.
Okay, so item number two is coyote management plan, that's going to be Chief Brennan and Mary McKenna. So we're going to go ahead, item number two is the coyote management plan. Patrick, did you want to join us? Okay, chief?
So, in the interest of time, I'm going to consolidate this, and if I miss anything in regards to it, then the others, either from the commission or my staff, can jump in here. We've presented you the proposed coyote management plan. The reason that we've done that, if you just follow the news here lately, you know, in a number of communities, the interaction between coyotes and people has resulted in people getting bit and injured, and some jurisdictions have had to take the process of actually lethally eliminating coyotes in their community. So Mary brought this to, I believe, to the commission and discussed this with them, and then we outreach both to our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, in terms of trying to develop a plan that we thought, you know, met the needs of our particular community. The staff report and the memo sort of outlines how we got to the place that we're at tonight, and what the history is in regards to this. We have, just so council is aware, have had some interactions between our citizens and coyotes. Last year, we had one that we ended up having a trap, it ended up having a broken leg, and also had the mange, which is, you know, fatal... which is, you know, fatal to, to foxes and coyotes, and in this case, was trying to steal a woman's chicken, and when confronted, the coyote turned on her and started to come at her. So, in that case, we were able to trap it and euthanize it with the assistance of Colorado Parks and Wildlife. So the plan, if I can just go through it real quickly, just sort of outlines responsibilities of the different entities. It defines what a coyote interaction is, there are different kinds of interactions. It gives you and lays out CSO guidelines in regards to how they respond, and how they would handle calls involving a coyote. It goes through, just from a process perspective, sort of outlawing coyote behavior, and the different types of behavior that you might see from a coyote, you know, both from, you know, particularly from an aggressive perspective, or a vicious perspective. It talks about, defines, and provides guidelines in regards to how our CSOs or patrol officers might respond to, to a coyote interaction. The authority both Colorado revised statutes and our own code gives to us in regards to that. And then at the end of it, because I know some of you are engineer types, we put together this really colorful and flowing, flow chart that sort of describes, you know, what, what the different kinds of calls for service involving a coyote might involve, and have laid that out. And I don't know if any of the commission members want to provide any input on, on, on this plan, or what, what your process was in regards to that, it's entirely up to you.
Any comments from the Animal Control Commission? Be sure to use the mic if you're gonna speak, because they have, we have to get it on the record, so...
We did have discussion about the plan, but it was brief. It was kind of truncated when we were told that we were going back to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Commission to follow their code. So we did not actually vote and approve it. We did discuss it briefly, though. We had other meetings set up, which didn't happen.
Erna, did you want to say, say something?
My understanding from staff is, is, is the commission was briefed and approved, so I'll stand by that, thank you.
So, so is there a discussion that you want to bring it back to the Animal Control Commission for an official vote? Do you guys want it back? Rhonda?
Not everyone's here.
Mr. Starker?
Police, I think it's a great, it's a great chart. I never see on here where the coyote gets arrested. Well, I mean, we have a lot of press releases, but I just didn't see where...
It's because he's wily.
Chief, would there be an opportunity for you to bring this back to the Animal Control Commission for an official vote again?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you. So he'll, he'll come back to you for a vote. Any other questions or comments from staff? Or from council? Okay, we're on to item number three. So Rhonda, you'll be seeing it again, I guess. Alright, item three is the Senior Resource Center. We have John Zabala here, and come on up. Thank you for coming tonight, Rhonda, Erna, the Hansas, everybody. Bye, Jenny. Thank you for coming.
Hey there, how you doing? Good to see ya.
What's that?
Yeah, it's... Long game.
Book in the bear.
Okay. So, uh, the Senior Resource Center wanted to make a presentation on their, their process, their new building, and also the, uh... Their Phase Two. So let's go ahead and start. John, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. John Zabala, President and CEO of the Senior's Resource Center, and to my right is Bob Timm, Vice President of Development, and to my left is Hank Broxma, Director of Transportation. So, first of all, let me just say thank you to the city for your ongoing support of the Senior's Resource Center, and without question, you certainly know that our community is aging, and I would say that the city of Wheat Ridge is, is really kind of leading, you know, the trend. Certainly outpaces Jefferson County, which has the largest senior population in the state of Colorado, and certainly the other municipalities within the county, and certainly the state of Colorado as a whole. This year, the Senior's Resource Center is celebrating its 35th anniversary, and first of all, I'd like to extend an invitation to a 35th anniversary celebration, June the 14th, from 11:30 to 1:30, and we hope you will join us. It's an opportunity for us to just say thank you to the community. I know that we are going to be hosting City Council on Saturday, May 18th, for your planning session, so we look forward to the opportunity to do that. I also want to invite you to an event that's going to occur on, on May the 16th. Three significant bills passed the legislature this year having to do with really addressing the needs of our older adult population. One Senate Bill 127, which expands funding through the older Coloradans Fund, which really does provide financial support for the kinds of programs and services that Senior's Resource Center provides. Transportation, in-home care, Adult Day respite services, care management. So these are important dollars that the state is, is really committing to expand the, the services that allow older adults to remain living independent and in the community for as long as possible. Senate Bill 111, which is mandatory reporting for elder abuse, is another piece of significant legislation that was actually sponsored by Senator Sue Schaefer. The, the third bill is, is going to allow an expedited process for individuals over 70 to electronically renew their, their identification card. All three of these bills are, are going to be signed at the Senior's Resource Center by the governor at 10:30 on the 16th, so I would extend an invite for you to attend. So the governor, along with many of our state legislators, as well as a lot of advocacy groups, will be in attendance, so we hope that you can attend. So, 35 years this organization has been in existence, 31 of those years we've been in the city of Wheat Ridge. So I, I really, once again, credit the, the city with your ongoing support. I would say, certainly more recently, as we look to expansion of our facilities, and in 2010, actually you drafted ordinance allowing for a, a use tax, a waiving, a fee of, of use tax and permit fees. And so, we were able to complete the construction of the designed-built state-of-the-art Adult Day Center. We're, we're back before you this evening to ask your support, once again, to consider waiving use tax and permit fees for Phase Two of our renovation, which is the old Columbia Heights Elementary School. And so, we have completed our capital campaign, so we met our fundraising goal of $8.7 million. But now we are in the design development phase of the actual renovation of the new building. And we need your assistance in, in helping us to, you know, kind of close the gap in, in terms of what the projected cost of renovation will be versus the monies that, that we have available to actually put towards renovation. So we're roughly looking at about just shy of $19,000, considerably less than what you approved in 2010, which was closer to $100,000. The, the, the second part of, of our request this evening is with regards to the ongoing continuation of the Wheat Ridge Circulator bus service, which you really provided support for the startup in, in 2008. Your initial contribution was $20,000. In 2011, 2012, you provided $50,000 in CDBG funds for that service. So, we're, we're asking consideration of $30,000, which would continue the service at its existing level, or, or looking at a $42,000 contribution or, or support that would allow for expansion of the service. The service was created to really link older adults living in congregate, senior living facilities to the community, to, to provide greater access to participate in, in community life. And so I can let Hank speak more about that.
Sure, thank you, John, and, and thank you, council. The Wheat Ridge Circulator has been a success overall. We have continued running it, even though we don't have current funding for it. We currently stop at primarily Highlands, South and West, the Town Center, Valencia, and one or two other apartments as the demand calls for. When I look at the raw numbers, I've been in human service, senior transportation for almost 30 years. There's always an ebb and flow that occurs. We're currently in a little bit of an ebb, but trust me, people are continuing to age, the flow will come back. So we have lower number of people using it, but I think that number will continue, will start to increase again. When I look at the numbers, when we started the project, we were running at 25, excuse me, an averaged cost of $25 per one-way trip. That has been reduced by almost 20% to $20 per one-way trip. We've done that through using fuel-efficient vehicles and automated scheduling software that we have in place. So our costs are about as low as they're gonna be, and I think they will start to rise. The biggest factor, of course, is fuel, and we've got Priuses and some CNG vehicles in place right now. None of those are used on the Circulator. In addition to the Circulator trips that we do, we provide trips in excess of, to, in excess of 300 people that are to other types of activities other than the Circulator. That can be to medical appointments, that can be to personal trips, which include for ladies going to the beauty parlor, often they will want to go there twice a month instead of the doctor once a year. That is a federal funding source that requires a 50/50 match. Another federal source that we use provides, it, needs a 20% match. So, any money that you put into our services, we're able to leverage that out, and covering the cost of the Circulator, keeping it within Wheat Ridge as instructed, has been very helpful. People continue to go to Applewood Plaza, continue to go to the Target, and we do, I admit, we do take them to the new Walmart, but not on the Circulator. We use another service for that, so...
I think that, you know, to Hank's point, and thank you for that, is that the funding for the Circulator did discontinue as of December of, of 2012. We, we have committed to continuing the service. You may be aware that, you know, we received a significant funding reduction from Jefferson County for 2013, basically 41% of our Jefferson County funding. So we had to make some very tough decisions with regards to how we were going to absorb those, those funding cuts, you know, which included closing one of our Adult Day Centers in South Lakewood, actually reducing our Medicaid-funded transportation services by, by 50%, layoff of, of eight staff, you know, reduction in, in some of our benefits. So, you know, but, but we, we wanted to preserve this Circulator bus service, and, and that's only a, a fraction of the transportation services we are providing to Wheat Ridge residents. So, a, a total of, of monies that we have allocated for Wheat Ridge Transportation since 2008 is about $890,000.
Patrick, could you describe maybe how the previous use tax was returned back to the, there wasn't, they, they paid it upfront, and there was a rebate back based on COs?
Correct. We used the Business Development Zone program that's in the code. It's a little bit of a stretch for this type of project, but, because usually that program's used for a future sales tax generating project, but council did, there, there is a section in the code that allows council to waive that requirement, basically. So we, that's, yeah, and it's, it's a rebate of the use tax.
So previously, they had $100,000, they paid the $100,000 in use tax and fees, and then that was rebated back to them after completion. And then the original Senior Circulator Bus was funded by the General Fund, and then it was kicked in with some CDBG money, but talking to staff, the CDBG funding has really ran dry. Ken, would you agree with that, or am I wrong? Please use a mic so we'll get on the record.
The, the federal CDBG program that's administered by Jefferson County just fundamentally has fewer dollars than it did a few years ago, just based on federal funding levels. It's also become just kind of much more competitive in terms of the types of applications that get funded. The CDAB board that makes the recommendation to the county, at least in the last year or so, has increasingly been focused on, on housing projects, and there's certainly, it seems to be plenty of those to go around. So, the, this type of an application would certainly be making an application in a very competitive environment.
So the questions before you as a council is, do you want to rebate the $19,000 for the permit use tax, and then also, did you want to continue the Senior Circulator Bus at every cost of about $30,000? $20,000, well...
With regards to the use tax permit fees? Oh, I'm sorry. No, it was $30,000 to continue at, at the existing level.
So it's $19,000 plus $30,000, $49,000. Mr. Reinhardt, do you have any questions?
Yeah, and, and I was, there was some talk of the edbing and the ridership. I was just wondering, is there a number, percentage, how many decline, and is there any thoughts as to whether that was driven by changing demographics, or, or, and is there any real information on why the, why it's the usage edding? Or are we just guessing? We don't know, we don't know.
I, I don't know for sure. My experience has been that usually in the senior population, there are people that hit 75 and begin to use the services. When they die out, for lack of better words, the next group that hits that age group takes about a couple of years to figure out access to services. So I think that we're at a little bit of a lull right now, but I expect that will pick up just based on the demographic projections for the area. Our normal service recipient is a single woman over the age of 75 on low fixed income, so it just takes a while for them to get a feel for what they can access.
Thank you.
Ms. Langford?
I guess I'm gonna kind of address both of these things a little bit. First of all, the original, original request that, you know, ended up being that $100,000 was a brand-new facility. What you're gonna be doing in, is just remodeling and making that older facility more efficient, and a better use of space, because I've, I've toured the older building, and if you think we have it tough here, they have it worse there. So it's really, I mean, that's why the price is mu, you know, the expected part is so much lower, is because there's so much less that actually has to be done, but it's, it's a vital part of, of what they give to our citizens. And then also on the Senior Circulator Bus, I've talked to, I can't remember his name. At, no, at the Town Center, the WAZI Partners.
Tyler.
Tyler, thank you. So, they're even looking at maybe creating their own Circulator Bus, just because they, they foresee a demand to be so high. And, and I, we, we want this, and if there's that much demand in our city that we have, I just, to me, it's very important, having been on this aging well- I just, to me, it's very important, having been on this aging well committee, that there is a giant need in our community for more than what we're giving our citizens, and this is just a small thing that keeps them independent, that allows them to, to still feel like they can do their shopping and get their needs met without kind of getting stuck left at home. So, I mean, the need is huge, and I don't see it, like you say, going away anytime soon. So, I would, I would recommend at least the thirty thousand for that, to keep it at its level.
How about the permit use?
Oh, I'd, I'm sorry. I'd recommend that as well.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, staff does need some direction to bring this forth, if you agree to it. Kristy?
So, I just have a question for Patrick as far as a budget purpose. If it's gonna be funds, I mean, there are funds that are not currently budgeted, and I know there's just something about a facilitator who are using her personal funds, so, I, you know, I guess I'd need questions from the staff as far as...
You want to use your personal funds for the...
Yeah, that does, it won't go that far. But I would be happy to, but it won't go that far.
Yeah, the thirty thousand will require, if that's the amount you choose, will require a budget supplemental to come from the reserves. The nineteen thousand will be a rebate, so it'll just be an accounting transfer.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
If I may make a comment with regards to Tracy talking about the renovation of the existing building, I think that as resources become scarcer, you know, and what we're faced with is capacity issue. The demand far exceeds the resources that are available to meet the needs. So, as Hank pointed out with regards to transportation, it's about, you know, creating operational efficiencies, you know, vehicles that are much more energy efficient. The same is true with the building. As you can imagine, this, this building is, you know, ninety years old. It's, it's still the old boiler system that was originally put in. So, by investing some dollars in new energy-efficient HVAC systems, you know, those are dollars that we will be able to see some tangible savings and redirect to providing services in the community.
Mr. Starker, do you have any questions?
I just, you said that, and I believe I didn't write it down, Senate Bill one-eleven was...
That's the mandatory elder abuse reporting?
No, it was the one before.
Senate Bill one-twenty-seven.
One-twenty-seven. That was going to, is that going to provide some additional funding sources for your...
It's, um, thank you. It's, yes, it will. Basically, it's an additional two million dollars to current eight million dollar funding level for the state. In two thousand and four, the state had conducted a needs assessment, which determined that actually a hundred million dollars was needed to fund the current level of demand, and so, you know, we're far from that. But, so this will bring the funding to ten million dollars for two thousand and thirteen, twenty-fourteen. The governor has also appropriated an additional two million dollars, so we're looking at twelve million dollars in funding for the next fiscal year. The seniors resource center's funding comes via the Area Agency on Aging for our region, Dr. Cog, and so through a competitive bid process, we do anticipate seeing an increase in funding in some of those service areas, such as transportation, the in-home care, non-skilled services, adult day, and respite. But that's also to kind of help offset, you know, the federal sequestration, which they anticipating a five percent reduction there.
So, does anybody have any questions or comments about the nineteen thousand or the thirty thousand, or discussion on that?
I'm actually gonna support the both, and I would throw this out there. I, I actually think, I support the concept of the nineteen thousand going to support the building program, I think that's worth doing. I think the mechanism of the BDZ for that particular function is probably flawed in my mind, but, you know, I'm not gonna let the best be the enemy of the good in this case, so I'll be supporting it in absence of a clear alternative way of supporting their programs. I'll take it up with the rest of that at some other date.
Mr. Stites, any comments? George?
I guess just for clarification, how is this coming, how is this coming back to us?
Oh, it'd be, it'd be a bud, a budget red, amendment as a resolution for the thirty thousand. The nineteen thousand would be just a transfer in accounting. They would pay it up front and rebate it back when they got their CO.
Actually, part of our BDZ program, I think there's actually a public hearing required for that piece too, in a resolution, so we have to go through that process too.
For the nineteen thousand?
Yep.
So, there'd be, there'd be two agenda items coming forward.
So, we're just, we're just voting to hear the agenda items.
Uh, Chris, Tracy, did you wanna?
I guess, I mean, it's, all right, so is there, I guess I move, or have a, is there consensus for the nineteen thousand rebate on the permit and, to move forward?
Consensus is to move forward the nineteen thousand, all in favor, to the council meeting? One, two, three, four, five, six? So, nineteen thousand will come forward to a council meeting, Mr. Cog? And then how about the next one?
And then consensus to bring forward to the next council meeting, a budget amendment for the thirty thousand at the existing level for the senior Circulator bus.
All in favor of the thirty thousand? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Nope.
Seven?
Four, five, six, seven.
But did you, you didn't?
Four, five, six, seven.
Oh, you got, okay, so eight, 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 okay. I, I can't see that. Any other, any questions or comments? As long as it wasn't the other finger, I mean, we're... Okay.
The ten-thirty.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Senior Resource Center, for all your work in the city.
Thank you.
What are we giggling about?
Okay, so we'll keep trying to move forward here. It's eight-thirty. Mr. Johnstone? Item four is proposed zoning code updates?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was short.
He has a thirty-slide PowerPoint. We're gonna get it ready right now.
It will be short, though I'm available for direction and questions.
I'll buy you a pizza.
This is really an ongoing project that we've had, really, since some of the recommendations stemming out of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy from two thousand and five in terms of kind of aligning our zoning regulations, our Zoning and Development Code, Chapter twenty-six of the municipal code, with the types of development entitlement processes that we have. We really developed back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we developed kind of a laundry list of code amendments that we felt we needed to get addressed to facilitate and create kind of the regulatory environment that we thought would be conducive to development. We've included in your packet a memo that talks to what we think are some of the priorities for this year, but then I think equally important, perhaps more important, we included a longer list, which includes high, medium, and low priorities for two thousand and thirteen and beyond, and then also gives you a kind of a sneak peek, maybe even more so for newer council members on some of the things on pages four, five, and six of code amendments that we've completed. So, we're very pleased to have had council support in moving forward a variety of ordinances that, that again, we think by and large were designed to facilitate a more appropriate regulatory environment that allows people to make investments in the community. We don't have a long list for two thousand and thirteen at this point, and I would note also that, I mean, some of these zoning code amendments are just best practice that just stems from issues coming up that we think need to be cleaned up. We also have recommendations that come out of many of our comprehensive planning efforts, so the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan identified a number of things. Obviously, we most recently adopted a Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor plan. It made a couple of recommendations that are on the list, including considering changes to the sign code, which is a low priority for us at this point, but also just things like the proactive rezoning that council passed last year of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor. So, we really just identified a few higher priority issues for this year, the subdivision regulations, which is Article Four of the zoning code, some possible changes to accessory dwelling units. Council will be briefed here in a month or so on the recommendations from the housing diversification strategy, but for quite some time, we've had on our list, we're just kind of waiting for that process to conclude, taking a look at whether accessory dwellings in some form or fashion could be another way to meet the housing demands of our, of our community and our citizens in creative ways in certain situations. Microbreweries are something that we want to support, and they come in a lot of different shapes and sizes, so kind of working our way through that is another thing that we think we ought to look, look at. We don't have exterior lighting standards that give us good direction as to what a good photometric plan is and isn't. We don't always, we don't mandate that you, that you have exterior lighting on commercial properties, but when you do, you're required to submit a photovoltaic, or excuse me, a photometric analysis indicating what the foot handle readings are for various portions of the site, but we don't have any substantive standards that tells us what's a good photometric plan. And then the sign code I mentioned, specifically on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, there were some recommendations regarding considering maybe some more consistency in design on the types of signs that are allowed on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. There's a variety of other things that just as sign, the sign industry evolves, could come up, but again, we're putting that as more of a, a lower priority, just to the extent that, that's a pretty big project to tackle, and one that needs to involve a good public process, and we're just not sure we have the resources right now to get that one done along with the others. In terms of going back to that highest priority, the subdivision regulations, as we have done in many of our ordinances, we do think there's some options for when you're looking at lot line adjustments and consolidation plots for more administrative approvals. We have some disconnects between some of our design standards and some of our easement requirements, so some of this is fairly technical, but for instance, we have build-to requirements in most of our, in our mixed-use zoning districts, as well as the Architecture and Site Design Manual, but we also require a ten-foot easement on the front of the property line, which, you know, arguably conflicts with that. We're telling you to build in an area, but we're also asking you for an easement. City council approved some amendments to some of our public dedication requirements and some of the triggers for when certain things are required. Those were changes that were made to Article Five and Article eleven or twelve of, of the code laws. We need to align some of those things with Chapter twenty-six as well. Some of you may be aware, when you consider the park dedication requirements for the WAZI project at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth, the Town Center, that we had some concerns that for multifamily, for denser projects, that there may not be kind of the appropriate fee structure or calculation for how that gets calculated for those denser projects, that there might be a little bit of a desire to, to take a good look at that. So, that is my fairly brief summary of where we're at for two thousand and eleven. We're just hopefully desiring to see some head nodding that those seem like good priorities, again, focused on the subdivision for starters, and then working on those next three as the next tasks in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen.
How about the International Property Maintenance Code changes?
Um, that is something that will be proposing, gets adopted and considered as part of the whole package of codes. We're still kind of, we have one code, the National Electrical Code, that we'll be bringing forward here soon to a study session, then hopefully to ordinance. We have, we need to do that to kind of align with some state requirements. The package of the other international codes are maybe a little further behind, probably later in two thousand and thirteen.
Mr. Reinhardt, do you have a question? Comments?
I was just wondering if this changing in staffing had dragged any of this backwards a little.
It did. We're, we have hired a new planner, one, Lauren McElack, who is actually in charge of the subdivision regulation code amendment. She was promoted to planner two, but her resources have been stretched really thin in terms of just kind of having to get the everyday work done of building permits and land use case processing. So, Wade Sanner is coming from Kansas. Real excited about him joining the team in the first week of June, and so, once he transitions in to start kind of having a better grasp of, of the position and the work, then we hope to be able to hit these things a little harder.
So, so you don't even think you get, I mean, they, these are mostly on the first batch, and there's just a lot of technical clarity. I'm familiar with most of these. You don't think you get through this whole list on these two pages this year, or you do think you...
We may well, yeah. I mean, I think we'd prioritize the first two, the subdivision regs and the ADUs, and then I think the other, the next two, the microbrews and the electrical code are more straightforward, more technical, don't require maybe as much public input. The sign code is the real elephant in terms of, you know, really wanting to have a good public defensible process in order to tackle that.
Okay. Thank you for whatever it's worth. I think it's a, it's a good list of the things I've seen, so, thanks.
Mr. Starker?
On the ADUs, does this, do you think there's, do we look like we're gonna be moving a lot more dwelling units into like R1 zoning areas, or how do you, how do you see this going together?
It could be. I, I think, you know, a lot of communities have created a regulatory context for allowing it under certain conditions, to have some sort of a limited size, and only on, you know, probably certain sized lots, only if you're meeting parking requirements, et cetera, but on some of the larger lots, or lots that just aren't very intensely developed. You know, it, it accommodates multi-generational households, allows people to sometimes age more in place, so I think there's a lot of interesting reasons to take a look at that, but certainly only in the right regulatory environment. So, whether that's in R1's districts or R2 districts, and under what circumstances in terms of how big does your lot need to be, what other kind of substantive requirements do you need to meet, you know, we think it's a, it's a good time to take a look at that.
Ms. Pong? Ms. Jay?
Yeah, I agree with you. There's a couple of things I'd ask about, either exterior lighting standards, this is just...
Oh, Ms. Jay, can you turn your mic on, please?
On the exterior lighting standards?
Yeah.
You're talking about raising the height and controlling the circumference of the light as it went down, I mean, on the ground or whatever surface it's on, and that just didn't make sense to me, and I was trying, trying to figure it out, so this is just one of these.
We, we have a maximum, and I'm, what page are you on, Ms. Jay?
First page, very at the bottom.
Okay.
Changing the height limit of eighteen feet.
We have a maximum height limit of eighteen feet for our exterior pole lights, and that can be a, you know, kind of a reasonable scale, particularly on smaller sites. I think when you look at larger commercial developments, the Clear Creek Crossing is probably a good example, that eighteen feet gets to be pretty low, and what it means is that part of it's a cost issue, I suppose, for developers, that you start to have to use a lot of fixtures.
Lot more fixtures.
And, and two, two other things, so, so that, that's a cost impact. Now, we may or may not care about that. I think we care to some extent, right? The, the other two issues are, you can get a fairly uneven light reading because they're so low. You don't get as even of a spread that you might from a twenty or even a twenty-five foot fixture. So, in terms of, one of the things in exterior lighting principles is you don't want hot and cold spots, that it, it's hard to kind of navigate from hot to cold.
The evenness.
So, going a little higher can help you, you know, have a little more even lighting levels. And then the third comment would, would just be, it can be a lot of clutter. I mean, it, just in terms of, you know, they conflict with landscaped areas and circulation areas, and it's just a lot going on if you have, you know, forty eighteen-foot poles instead of twenty-five, twenty-two foot poles.
I'm, I'm wondering if we'll have more citizen objection that those lights are, I assume that you'll be aware of that.
Well, and then, right, and it could be in different, you know, maybe...
Some, some, something in between.
Right, and it could be that we're only allowing these in larger commercial developments, or, and again, I think it gets back to the other part of that, that lighting code amendment, which is the desire to get these good foot handle measurements. So, we already have a standard that says you have to be zero at a residential property line, so we would kind of be addressing that issue to a large extent. We already require that you have cut-off fixtures, so you can't see the actual light source.
Right.
So, there's, there's already some protections in place for the residential.
And the only other one in this group that I was kind of, well, there's another one, but I don't particularly want to go there. but I don't particularly want to go there, when you talked about, I'm trying to think which one it is here, extended stay lodging.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'm really aware that, that is a problem for our city because there are people who are living in motels.
Right.
And what, what I'm trying to, to say is, well, well, that may not seem desirable. For some people, that's the only place they can live, and so I think we need to be kind of gentle when we go in there.
Right.
And, and be aware of that, that, that their circumstances are, are that.
Right.
And, you know, you have a whole range of people in a population in a city, and we, we have to be kind to, to all of those.
Yeah, and I think there's a, there's a couple of things that you can look at when you look at extended stay. I mean, I think it's first the policy question of, do you want them, and, and do you want them, under what circumstances? You know, do you want to make sure that the, kind of the housing quality of those is such that it supports that type of longer-term stay, so that there are adequate cooking facilities?
Right.
That sort of thing.
I'm, I'm more comfortable that direction.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
I just had a, I was going to bring up the extended stay because the majority of those happen to be in District Four, so if you took three, you would get them too. I, I would, I would agree that, not so much about who stays there or that area, but how they're maintained, because they're not really maintained well, and there was a very unflattering article about one of those facilities, the Ramada, which, you know, it, it should, it, if people are going to live there, they should have a quality of life, and if there's not a quality of life, then we're not doing them any favors, but, but I, to me, I would actually say that it maybe need to even move up a little bit, but that was, that was really going to be my comment, that I think we need to address that sooner than later. It's a, it's an outstanding problem in our city. I don't know, is it thirty percent of the police budget goes over into that area? I mean, I know it's a huge percentage of the police budget that is spent just in those hotel motel areas. I mean, I know there's an additional tax on them, but I don't know that that even begins to cover our costs. My question about the, the height of the lights, the high, the lights that are on the highway, the new ones, that, how tall, do you know how tall those ones are, the, the...
Huge. I don't.
Well, those are the, on, on our, our two, or, like, Thirty-Eighth Avenue and stuff? Oh, I-70, those are tall.
Like on I-70, the new ones, they, they put in some new ones in recently?
I don't know either. The ones like on Wadsworth are, they're thirty feet.
Well, these are taller than that then, okay.
Fifty, fifty?
Are they fifty?
I don't know.
Okay, I just, I mean...
At least.
They're really tall, okay. I was just curious if you knew.
Counsel, I have one request. I've heard this from business owners in the city for quite a few years, and on the sign code, what some business owners have requested, that have the ability to do, is have icon signs where it's a lighted sign that looks like a coffee cup for a coffee shop, or a cat for a, a veterinaries hospital, and that sign would be lit or not lit, but they, they were, wanted to have that option on their business to make it more unique, and I don't think right now we allow icon signs, or they're counted as part of their overall sign, signage, and, so I just wanted to see if council was looking, interested in looking at having staff maybe come up with some options for icon signs, because some businesses, that's how they get their word out, you know, they have a, like, you know, you'd have a tire on, tire on a car top of BNF Tire, or something like that, that kind of stands out amongst everybody else, so, do you, are you interested in having staff look at that as, as an option for icon signs? For thirty, you know, it would be an option.
I like that, yeah.
It, it could be art in some cases, you know. Mr. Pond?
So the, the architectural guidelines or site, site design manual that's enforced on Thirty-Eighth doesn't have any of that. I know there's like a fifty square foot limit, there's some, there is some language in the site development guidelines, right, or the architectural standards?
Yes, both, and in the mixed-use neighborhood zone district, which applies on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, you're not allowed to do pole signs, so if you want to do a ground-mounted sign, it needs to be, you know, a monument sign with a base. The, the next idea was to see whether on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, you'd want to take that to the next level in terms of kind of creating some sort of a palette of materials, or some sort of a design seam that would lend some kind of consistency to signage.
Sure, no, that, that makes sense, but getting...
To, to the mayor's point, we, we, some types of those, depending on what types of design elements that they'd want to incorporate, and the animation wouldn't be allowed, but I think the bigger obstacle is just, and, and I know we recently had a request from, from Tommy Slalom to do a, a boat, roof, roof-mounted boat sign, roof-mounted signs aren't allowed. Some of it's just pure area, because if, if it's, if it's designed to convey the, if it's using like the product that you're selling, then it's considered signage, and it, when you calculate those three-dimensional signs, the area adds up really quick.
Right, so just to be careful, all I'm saying is iconic signage is not necessarily prohibited by the current code, it's, there's, the...
Square footage in there.
Yeah, right, so, you know, anyway, I mean...
Maybe, could it be like on a case-by-case basis with a special use permit or a staff, you know, some kind of an amendment or something where...
A boat-by-boat basis, or?
Boat-by, coffee cup by coffee cup basis. Would anybody have a problem with at least staff looking at that?
At the new marijuana store.
And the flashes. Does anybody have a problem with staff at least looking at that?
Can you, you understand the, what they're, what he needs, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments from staff? Okay, all right, so that will move on to staff reports.
We're okay on everything else then?
Yeah, everything else, so, everybody else okay with that moving forward? Okay, staff reports, Mr. Goff?
I guess we do have one, and Janelle can jump in too, but we just want to give you a heads up that on Thursday, staff is, and staff attorney is going to be bringing to the liquor authority some options to, I think, three different options, right, Mr. Dole? Because there's always three options, to, on issuing liquor licenses. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but the approval of liquor licenses through this, this Colorado Bureau of Investigations, part of it has been very slow. I think, not sure exactly what the reason is, but a lot of the rumors is because of a lot of the gun, gun permit checks that they're also doing, so we've had a lot of licenses that have, are, been held up for, for weeks. So, city attorney's office at the insistence of, of our deputy city clerk, Bruce Rome, have looked at some options, and one of the options is to issue a, a temporary license, and another option is to do nothing, and a third option would be to go ahead and issue, or go ahead and have the, the hearing in front of the liquor authority, get that out of the way, and then as soon as the CBI approval comes through, they get their license from, from the city clerk or the liquor authority. So they're going to bring those options to the authority on Thursday. Just want to, Janelle, did, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, it, it kind of got to the point where Bruce finally called CBI, or the, the state, excuse me, he called the state liquor people and said, how are you approving the things that you have to approve? And they, without the CBI report, and they just said, we're just, we're just granting them. And so then there was some discussion between Bruce and Chris Price, who does the liquor stuff, and it was kind of like, well, if it's good enough for the state, it should be good enough for us. But there was some reflection back to, and I don't know if there's anyone here that remembers that, there was a time when a liquor license was granted in Wheat Ridge without benefit of that final CBI approval, and it turned out to be there was some serious criminal background involved, and it was a source of embarrassment and trouble. So it, it will just have to see what the liquor authority wants to do if they want to just go ahead and grant them, and they would sign a, an agreement that you, you are who you say you are, and that's your birthday, and, because that's basically what the CBI does, and that you, and also to check, do you have a criminal background, do you not? And if they check no, and it turns out they do, we can get the state report of if there's a criminal problems in Colorado, but the CBI is willing to find things from other states, and they have, sometimes. So if the person lies, it would be better to just say, yes, I have been convicted of a, a crime. A lot of times it's, you know, yeah, it's a DUI, you know, ten years ago, and it doesn't really apply, or it was something stupid when I was nineteen years old, and now I'm thirty-five or forty, and I want to have a liquor license. That's understandable, as long as people are, you know, honest and upfront, upfront and honest about it, but if they, if they lie, that does not set well with the liquor authority, because it, a whole, comes under that whole category about good conduct that is supposed to be part of the liquor license. So we'll see if they want to give that conditionally, or permanently, or conditionally based on pursuant to the, what the CBI turns up, or just stay the way we are, and just stay waiting, 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 waiting. So I just, I just thought that you folks ought to know that, that that's going on out there, rather than finding out after the fact and saying, what in the world's that, what are they doing, so, anyway, that's all.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Oh, Ms. Davis?
I guess one of my questions is, why can't we as a city run a background check?
Because states, the, the state liquor code says that only, the police department can do it, but they can only do it for criminal circumstances, or some wording like that. So if, now one time, there was somebody that admitted to something, and then the state, the, our police ran it, and they found stuff from Colorado and from another state, but if it's just applying for a liquor license, that's not a criminal behavior, and I see Mr. Dole moving into place to, to speak on this, but have I said anything wrong so far?
No, I mean, the short answer is the state statute requires that the local liquor licensing authority have that, you know, have that investigation from CBI, it just requires that.
Right, but is there any reason, like in the interim, I, I don't know how long this is going to last, but in the interim, that we run a preliminary background check and wait for the CBI one?
Well, I mean, effectively, that's one of the options that's being presented to the liquor authority, and, and they're the ones, unless council wants to enact an ordinance and kind of occupy this territory, they're the ones that, you know...
So it is a possibility, basically?
Yeah, they're the ones that, that's one of the three options that...
Okay.
That, that they've been given, but the, the reason that this box, you know, exists is because of the state statute. It's irritating, but, but not something you can avoid, that the, the state liquor itself is just going ahead and processing, but, but we're still faced with a statute that says what it says, there is the potential for risk, as Janelle describes, so we've, we've given them a couple of different ways to shorten the process for local licensees, but there is that risk out there, and that's really why the, you know, why, why that check is required by the state statute, and even though we're, even though we're home of a city, we, that's a matter of statewide concern.
Yeah, I don't, my, my question was to replace it as much as just to have another check and balance in the case that we could run one until we get the other one.
Well, we can, you know, we can, we can run as much as we can, but it doesn't give us the same information. So I suspect the liquor authority will take one of the two action doors, as opposed to the no-action door that we're suggesting to them.
Thanks.
Ken, is Forty-Eighth and Wadsworth a quasi judicial matter now? Because I got the phone call today about it.
Right, it's, it's not yet.
Might want to give Christie and Joyce a heads up on the...
Yeah, and I think I s... I think I sent an email out, just indicating that it might become a quasi one. Right now, it's, they've had their neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
They're, they'll be submitting their application shortly, so this is a, a proposed sixty-four unit assisted living facility at Forty-Eighth and Wadsworth, or between Forty-seventh and Forty-Eighth on Wadsworth, and it's, assisted living is a special use permit in that R2 zoning district, so they're going to be making application. It's a facility proposed to be operated by a company called Golden Orchard. If there are neighborhood objections, or if I propose conditions on the application that they object to themselves, or a neighborhood protest is filed, then it would trigger city council review as a public hearing, as a special use permit. So we anticipate that there will likely be, based on some feedback that we've gotten from the neighborhood, that there'll likely be a protest which would trigger the city council meeting.
The, the question I got from one of your constituents, or one of our constituents, was they thought council had turned this down about a year ago, and actually what council had turned down was the changes to the group homes, remember that whole issue of numbers? They take that as, that we turned down that, and it, and they're not even associated, this is assisted living versus group home. That's what it is, so...
So is there any other properties that this group home is interested, I mean, is there a way that, I mean, there's plenty of other properties around in Wheat Ridge, and I know there's a lot of uproar about this neighborhood, I just didn't know if this is a developer that we could perhaps get interested in another location? Yeah, District Three or Four would be fine.
I, I'm not aware, you know, what in particular they find attractive about this location, you know, whether they want to be on a, a bus route, or obviously that's available on Wadsworth. It is one vacant piece of land, and then one that they have under contract, or maybe have purchased, and then the adjacent, not particularly well-maintained home that they're, they're trying to acquire, so to the extent that they, they may kind of clean up a little bit of a blighted property in the process, but I, I don't know what's driving them in terms of location requirements. They've been looking at this property Golden Orchard has for quite some time, because they were the entity that was looking at doing a protected class group home on the property before, but a smaller-scale project, so they've kind of expanded the scope of it and turned it into a full-on assisted living.
Okay, thanks. Any other staff reports? Elected official reports? Mr. Starker?
On May eleventh, we're going to have some dumpsters over in the east, east Wheat Ridge neighborhood on Thirty-Fifth Avenue, if citizens would like to bring their, for cleanup day, and on the flyer that was listed, that was sent around, it said that we, on June fifth, were going to have a meeting at Yule Firehouse, and in fact, we are, but the flyer says it starts at six o'clock, and in fact, it starts at five o'clock, so...
Is it June fifth or June sixth? I thought it said June sixth.
I thought it was Friday the fifth at five.
Okay, I just...
I'd have to look at, I, I know it's a Friday.
Yeah, I, I thought it said six, but maybe I'm mis, misreading it.
But it should, it should be...
Or fourteenth is a Friday. It would have to be the seventh if it's a Friday.
Okay, well, there's, June seventh?
Well, Davis knows when it is, when, when is it?
I don't, but it is on the, it's five o'clock on...
On the seventh.
The seventh.
June seventh, okay. So we're both wrong, June seventh.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or elected officials matters? Okay, well, I guess we'll adjourn into executive session, want to take five minutes, run in the restroom, and then come back?